Calling the meeting to order. Vote on the minutes from September tenth. Please vote a motion.
We have October tenth and October twenty-fourth.
I'm sorry, I went to the wrong place. I don't have them with me. And I will confess, I didn't look at them.
The one for the twenty-fourth was our abridged meeting where all we talked about is, do you want me to send them both around again right now?
Sure. I'm sorry.
No, no, that's fine, I can do that.
It's not been a good week.
Okay.
I do have the director's report for eleven fourteen.
Okay, but we could start there while I see if I can get these.
Do you want me to? Do you want me to send them out, Allison, I am right there.
Do you have them right there, yeah. I mean, I have them, but I don't have them.
I have ten twenty-four, yeah. Who do I send, to Juslin or everybody?
Yes, Juslin.
I think Juslin, yeah. Juslin?
Well, in the meantime, Patrick, why don't you start the director's report?
Okay, okay. So, right off the top, I will highlight that again, our patron count for, sorry, October, not September, but for October was again fifty percent, roughly fifty percent higher than it was for the same month last year, which is a huge amount. We have, we have started back with a regular schedule of staff meetings. I am doing them sort of in two tiers because a lot of the discussion, forgive me if I talked about this at the last meeting, but the way we've kind of like worked it out is that there's sort of two tiers of conversation that go on. One is between, you know, Sue and Julia and myself, because there's sort of bigger picture stuff where we need to kind of hash it out. And then a general staff meeting where we can sort of talk about the more granular day-to-day things that are more like what people need to know and everybody needs to be on the same page about. So, we're going to be doing the, the meetings with Julia and Sue and myself will be the first Wednesday at noon. And then the bimonthly, we're going to do bimonthly meetings with staff because it is hard to get, it's easy to get the people that are full-time to that meeting. It's hard to get the people that are not scheduled to work at that time to willingly agree to come in for an hour and a half in the middle of the day that they're not otherwise scheduled to work.
So, bimonthly meeting every two months as opposed to bimonthly, which somehow also means twice a month.
Shh, twice, twice, every other month.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is what we're doing.
They don't want to zoom in?
What's that?
Zooming?
Zooming? We could, we could start doing that if that's, if that's going to be a thing where people can't do it. But even so, it's still time that, you know, there is their own and they may or may not be available in the middle of the day that they don't work because, you know, people have other commitments and what have you. So, we're trying to make that work and I am summarizing the meetings if people are not there. I'm sort of putting together an email for everyone so that there's sort of a recap of the details that people need to be aware of. So, things that are, you know, date-related or, you know, we're working on updating the process for securing the building because we've had some, we've had some issues and things are just changing in general. So, we're just, we're going to be doing some procedural things that everybody needs to be on the same page about, like sort of like checklist-type stuff. So, we're working on getting that together and making sure that everyone knows all of the information that they need to know. The roof update, I wanted to, so I sent out, what I basically did is I did a search of building envelope consultants in Massachusetts and then just sort of went through, you know, the top four or five of those and just sent out an email summarizing the, you know, summarizing our experience and what we're looking for. So far, I've gotten two responses and for both of the, for both of those consultants, I've uploaded the as-built drawings so that they can look at those, get familiar with the building and then put together a proposal for, you know, for the work if they're interested in pursuing it. So, that's where that stands. Hopefully, at least one more of those folks will get back to me. Need a planting project is sort of a preliminary go. I did meet with Scott McCarthy, he looked at the spot that we were looking at and said he didn't have any concerns beyond making sure that we didn't cover over, I mean, he didn't, he didn't even say that we had to keep the planting within the perimeter. He said we could have some of those manhole covers like in the garden, they just needed to be accessible. So, and his other concern was to making sure that the roots of anything we plant are not so, you know, vigorous and deep that they're going to go and penetrate concrete or whatever is down below and cause that to fail prematurely. So, I said that we could let them know that we just want shallow root systems and sort of more meadowy things than anything like trees or big bushes. We're still working on the Aspen stuff that was mentioned in the previous meeting. There was a brother demo that took place together, took place today at a users council meeting over Zoom to sort of talk about the functionality. It was more the functionality of the catalog and less what we can do as far as like building a website off of that. But it is going to be a vastly improved experience for people using the library catalog and how it's organized. Library of things, did request use of some small amount of space in the Goodwin wherever it could be given to us and that was, that request was denied. So, we're going to be looking at other possibilities for that. The other-
Do you have ideas for that sort of alternatives?
There are ideas, they're not necessarily convenient ideas, but you can make it work. And, you know, we'll be, we'll have to be looking more critically at what we land to make sure that it's of a size that we can really accommodate. If it's going to be something bigger than that, there has to be a really good reason for why we're going to, you know, make that sacrifice of space. What's that?
Did they say why we can't use the Goodwin, like I said?
So, there were several, there were several issues, some of which I was able to speak to about access to the building. There were concerns about people going into the Goodwin, whether they were staff or members of the public.
Because the public wouldn't be going in.
I know, I explained that, I explained that. So, there were, there were some misconceptions about the project itself, some of which I thought were kind of inappropriate just because it's sort of like a sense of, oh, this is going to become like the thing that at my church where people dump stuff and then we've got like a dumping ground of donated stuff. And I said, no, it's not really going to be like that, it's going to be very curated and nothing's going to be, that's not what this is. So, I was able to speak to that, but in the end, in speaking to Carolyn, she essentially said, well, you know, at some point, this building is going to be renovated, there's going to be work in there and then you'd have to move it. So, what would you do then? And I said, well, I don't know, this was my, this was my first step now as a fallback to the, to not having space here. So, I said, we'll figure it out.
Is there anything we can do to advocate for it as trustees, like?
Relative to the, to the Goodwin? Or to the library of things generally?
To getting the space? I mean, I just think about access to, for someone working in the library to get the item. It's, it's really very convenient and it's, you know, it's not like we're the only library that has a library of things. This isn't like a new concept that's-
Right.
You know, is there anything that we could do to help clarify?
At this point, no, I don't think there's really any more clarity that can be had. It's really sort of like a, it's, it's something that we'll have to contend with just in terms of our own, you know, staying within our own footprint and using the space. It's not a hill that I really want to, that I want to die on.
Well, and it's something that can be revisited later, right? So, as we build out the library of things and have things here, right, we might technically exceed our space, right? Or someone might give us a donation of something so big and wonderful that the town might be interested in saying, yes, we want to have that. Because if the alternative is, no, we can't have that because we don't have space, right? So, I feel like just because it was denied now, doesn't mean it will always be denied.
Yeah, I, right. I mean, I know that there are plans for that building and I can't really, I don't know what they are or what the timeline is for. So, I, you know, I will have to defer to their judgment on whether that's a good use of the space and whether we just have to turn around and move anything that was in there. But it was really just, the point was just to have a fallback so that if we had something that we'd know where we'd be able to put it, just a couple of shelves. So, we'll, you know, it's not going to stop us from doing anything and it doesn't, it doesn't interrupt the timeline of us getting this started, so.
We just need circulation to be so good that we never actually have to store any of the stuff.
Ooh, there you go.
You just drop it off at the next person's house.
Exactly.
Yes, exactly.
That would be amazingly convenient.
Yes.
So, the other, the other fun thing about this project that is just sort of a happenstance thing, but we had a, we were contacting someone at Smith College that's working, it's an education leader that's working with the Smith College Campus School. And they're, those, the kids, the students are doing, they're doing the kind of like Lego, I can't think what it's called, the Lego League thing, the robotics thing that we've been involved in here. But those kids have, there's a component of what they're doing that is like a sort of community service component and they have to come up with, you know, a project. And the thing that they wanted to do would be to partner with a library or libraries to have a sort of lending library of Legos. And at first I thought that this was in order for the kids to do the robotics thing, but it's, it's not that necessarily. It's just that they feel that there's a kind of barrier, financial barrier entry with Legos because they're very expensive. And so, I said, well, that would be great because we're starting this library of things, this would be something, I mean, it was actually something that I had already thought about because we have so many Legos that have been-
I was about to ask, would you like more? Because I have a giant bin in my closet that I would love to leave home.
I know, while at the same time that I'm saying we have no space, I'm also saying you can never have too many Legos, so.
Yeah. And Legos will not stay here, they will be on constant loan.
Yeah, yeah, so short answer is probably yes.
Can we go back in time so that there was a library of things when my kids were little and I didn't buy that many Legos?
So, so that's cool and it's going to be nice in the sense that I think the way this is going to work is that we're going to take a bunch of, like, some, one of those big bins of Legos over to the, you know, the college kids that are organizing this and then they'll take it in to the younger kids and then they'll sort through it and put, you know, put things into lendable kits since it's some form that they'll be able to take out. So, I'm excited about that because that's a synergy. Donor recognition, you probably saw that the new plaques for 2022 are on the wall. And I did put something on Facebook saying, you know, before the end of the year, if you want to be on for 2023, then get your donation in. I did check, asked tonight, we hadn't received any new donations since we'd made that announcement, but still, I think people just are, you know, I think we'll get some and I have had interest, I've had people inquire at the desk about it, they just haven't made a contribution yet. We did request a quote for, from Thayer Street, the company that's done a lot of the woodwork in the building for a community bulletin board out here because the table thing has outlived its desire. It's not, it's, we don't, we want to get rid of that table, we're tired of the mess by the front door. And, you know, we should have like a proper bulletin board. So, it's, the idea is decided right here in the hall, sort of out of the way where people, you know, coming around the corner can put things up and it won't be the first thing that you see when you walk into the building.
That's awesome. I like literally just saw a community bulletin board two days ago and I thought, why don't we have one of those in the library? So, yay.
Yes, this is one of those things that just, we've been talking about it for a long time and, and recently, it's one of those things where the, you know, having the table with things on it, it's fine, it's great, but it's also kind of a nuisance because people are continually coming in and sort of stretching what they can put on the tables. So, we've got stacks of things, we've got, you know, things with brochures and everything else, we're kind of like, hmm, we'd rather just have a bulletin board where we can either tack something up or not and-
Yeah.
And that's it. So, that's what we're going to try to do.
That's a genius idea, rather than trying to police the table, just remove the table and dabble.
Well, I mean, we should have just had the bulletin board in the first place, that's what, that would have been genius, that would have been next level. But we couldn't think of anything.
Then you have more room too, you know.
Yeah. And then the last thing that I wanted to bring up, this is sort of something that I've been thinking about for a while. And I'm wondering what the trustees will think of it, but I, I think that it's time, particularly now that we have so much volunteer energy going into the day-to-day operation of the library. I think it would be great if we could start something where we, in an annual way, begin to single out volunteers for appreciation for the work that they do, you know, often over the course of many years and putting in many, many hours. So, I don't know what form or fashion that should take, but I thought it was something that I would bring to the trustees to see if it's a discussion that we could have going into the new year and figure out what form that could take if you all are amenable to doing something like that.
So, my first question is, like, do we single out one volunteer each year or do we celebrate all of the volunteers? Or do we find a way to do both of those things? My vote is for choice C.
Both.
Both, but-
I like both, definitely.
So, like a volunteer of the month?
I don't know if it would be every month because there's not that, there are not that many volunteers, but I think, I do think that, you know, there are people that go above and beyond. I mean, all of the, all the people that are volunteers here go above and beyond, but I'm thinking of someone like, you know, Marilyn Brown who has worked in the library every Tuesday for, I mean, as long as I've been here. I don't even know when she started, but for as long as I've been here, she's been putting in, you know, four or five hours of-
She's here before I get here?
Yeah, I mean, she gets here right before we open and sticks around until about three. And, and, you know, she's super helpful, she's really, really done a lot. And not only that, but she's involved in the friends, she's involved in helping to maintain the landscaping, the gardening and it's, you know, so I'm singling her out because she's a great example of the kind of energy that volunteers bring to the library that for us is so incredibly indispensable and we can't really function without it.
I mean, I'm with Jessica and both and I think, you know, a lot of places or boards I've been on have like a volunteer appreciation event once a year. We could have like a breakfast or just like a, you know, bagels or like whatever we could do.
Yeah.
An afternoon cookies, but-
Sure.
I think about the event that we had for the donor wall and it wasn't that hard to do and it was really nice, right? Like it was a pretty simple event and we could even make it, you know, a little more simple. We can, and have a nice event acknowledging our volunteers.
Yeah.
What time of year do we think, I mean, we probably should wait for after the holidays, right?
I didn't have a timeline, I just thought it was something that we should maybe start considering, you know, knowing how long, you know, some of the people that are doing this have been with us, it seemed like it was high time to do it.
Do you, does it make sense or does it not make sense to combine it with the donors from the donor wall for that year? Is there a way to make that work together or is that weird and funky?
I think it's different.
It is, right? Yeah, I agree. I was just trying to, I was just trying to float and be creative.
I wonder, my first response was, because I organized something on campus when I was still there and it was, they used, they used to have, oh, we're going to nominate someone and it was always the department that took the time to nominate someone that won, not because people who deserved it weren't put forward. And I organized an everybody thing and I think that's extremely important. And I wonder if longevity might be a way to single out some donors or not, I mean, some donors of their time.
Like a non-judgment call?
Yes.
Or like hours volunteered this year or years total volunteered or something?
Some kind of recognition at five, ten, fifteen perhaps? Which would be- Objective rather than-
Subjective. Right?
Yeah.
What if you had the volunteers nominate and choose the volunteer so that it was not jealous of us?
They don't always, they're not trying to say that they don't know what the other ones do.
You know, they don't always observe what the others are doing. I, my thought was to have the staff, this be a staff thing where staff, you know, because that, particularly the folks that are working on the front desk see, they know they're working directly with the volunteers. So, you know, Sue at this point has become the organizer of volunteers, she's the contact point and the, and the, you know, general organizer and scheduler. And so, she sees, you know, she knows exactly what everybody's up to and what they're doing and how helpful each person's work is. So, my thought was to have it be someone that, you know, a nomination by the staff to say, we really don't recognize this person this year because we know specifically what they did, but.
How many people volunteer, are like sort of current volunteers or have volunteered in the last year?
Uh, it sort of depends on-
Like ballpark, but like-
Yeah, I mean, it depends on, it depends on-
Is it more than twenty?
It's probably in the twenty range and then if you start to think about like what, you know, friends-related stuff, then it gets higher. But it's, it's probably about twenty people that reliably come in to do stuff in the library. There are also people that have come and done stuff outside the library, gardening and weeding and doing things like that, just showing up and doing it.
So, what I would, what I would suggest, one, yes, I love the event thing because then that's a way of recognizing everyone all at once and I think that's the most important thing. And then like, maybe there's a couple of categories. Like I don't imagine we're talking about like a giant volunteer award of, you know, like huge monetary or something like that. So, why not give out like a few awards each year, like the, like the garden, like the garden superstar and the like most hours worked and the longevity award or something like that, just so that there's more people being celebrated.
I think that's a good point and the other thing of it is that I don't think that people want, I think a lot of people are sort of averse to, they don't want to be showered with attention. A lot of people are just like, I just came here to sell some books, I don't really want-
Right, but they might come for a breakfast, right? They might come for lunch or something.
Make it very informal and make it very fun and not like, you know, you're going to the-
Academy Awards.
Right, exactly, just like a coffee and some munchkins and a, and a, thank you for-
Yeah, we could do better. We could do better.
Better than munchkins?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Nothing's better.
I guess we're like divided on munchkins.
Yeah.
So, is this undermining the appreciation of all the, you know, you're talking about a thing to appreciate all the volunteers and then a thing to appreciate one, one, five, six volunteers? If you, if you're going to appreciate all the volunteers every year, why not make the special individual award special for not necessarily this year's winner, but this year we have somebody we really want to recognize for, for, for special service above what we're recognizing everybody for? Otherwise, doesn't it sort of diminish the celebration of all the volunteers? I mean, I think the supporting players in the, in the major awards?
I'm not sure I'm following what you mean. So, you're saying it diminishes it by not having singled someone out to be like the, or-
No, by singling someone out, that's, this is the main event.
Yeah.
And we, all you guys are great, thanks, but Ellen is wonderful.
Oh, you're saying just have a group celebration, not have a-
But then once in a while, when it's obvious to the staff or somebody, like there's somebody who hasn't been recognized and this year would be a good time to do it, but not feel like we have to fill a slot every year.
Maybe the categories change from year to year. That there, we want to, we want to like honor three important volunteers and here's what they've brought to the library this year. Doesn't have to be like star award every year or something.
Maybe it would be good to have a conversation with Sue-
Yeah.
In terms of identifying what she sees as the areas of recognition or if there truly is an individual who has not, you know, maybe gotten the attention or, I'm, just from what I see, I keep thinking how much money the town is saving by not having staff members because the level of work that folks are doing is above just grab a volunteer off the street. But ask Sue.
Well, we talked about it, she's generally, she's generally, I mean, she's supportive of the idea. We did, we did talk about it and, and again, I don't think, you know, I don't want to, I don't think it's something that we really should get like so lost in the weeds about, about how this goes. I just feel like it would be really great to just, once a year, however we do it, that we just should be like highlighting the value of volunteers and thanking them and if it, maybe this year we don't do anything beyond just having like a coffee and Danish's kind of thing one morning and just inviting volunteers to attend and just to thank them. That, that might be sufficient and then we'll just see if it evolves over time.
Yeah.
But I just know that there are, you know, there are people that have put in so many years now and, you know, it's really starting to hit me how long they've been here and how much they've done over time and it just seems like the kind of thing we really should highlight.
Can I also suggest that maybe outside of a general volunteer recognition event, that I would certainly be willing to authorize the expenditure of, you know, however much if Sue decided that just because on this occasion she wanted to recognize Joanne who puts, does all of the book prep for loading stuff into the catalog, to go and buy some flowers or a plant or something.
You can't do that with town money.
I'm not planning to do it with town money, we have other resources.
Well, I mean, Joanne specifically is a tax, a tax, you know, she's doing like the tax abatement thing. So, whether or not you consider her, she's technically, I believe, considered an employee, but your point is well-taken. There are many people doing many things like that and we could, we could do that again if one person, if the trustees feel like we should highlight one person because we can do it either way.
I'm saying that outside of, and that's sort of as a more one-on-one rather than-
Oh, sure.
A broader recognition. I mean, yes, there should be an event to which all volunteers are invited. But even like Joanne, even though she's on that program, she continues to work beyond her commitment. So, that, I mean, she still is a volunteer. But if, if Sue were moved for whatever reason, then I would certainly like her to see her be able to do something in the moment when it's recognizing, you know, something specific or, you know, this is the thousandth day that Marilyn has, or you know, five hundredth or two-hundred-and-fiftieth day that Marilyn has come to do whatever and that's a lot. And so, she shows up on that day and there's flowers and a balloon or something. In addition to, but ask her if she thinks that that's something that would work for her as an alternative. I mean, maybe not and that's fine.
Yeah, I will, I'll have a, I'll have a further conversation with her and we'll talk about it. Is this something we want to just sort of table until the next, until the next meeting?
I think you certainly have everyone's consensus that yes, we should do something. I would vote for like March or April when it's starting to get light, you know, if we did something on one of the days when the library opens later.
Yeah.
I was thinking March is past the rush of things and it's sort of a lull time of year. But I think the first one should just be maybe a group effort and then, I mean, we could make notes and just say, you know, we just want to acknowledge that so-and-so has been volunteering in the library for fifteen years and so-and-so has been volunteering in the library for ten years and so-and-so and, you know, we thank everyone for-
The tricky part of that is that we don't, unlike personnel, we don't have, it's some, some of the- some of these things are lost.
Some detailed records.
We have no idea.
No idea.
We've been here a long time.
I actually, I, I think, I think if there are some folks who have done like really quite amazing things, I don't think that recognizing them at this event diminishes other people's contributions. I think about, I don't know, I think when I've been in circumstances like that where I'm like an occasional volunteer and someone's being applauded for their amazing work, I'm excited for them and like really happy to be appreciating them as well.
Yeah.
Um, and I don't think that it then makes me feel like, well, gosh, what about what I did? Um, I think it just adds to the sense of celebration and kind of, um, I don't know, I think it's a little bit inspiring and, and, um, and, I mean, unless the person objects to being recognized publicly, I think there is also something to the, you know, naming it in front of others that they've been doing this thing for so long, even if they've been doing it quietly or, or humbly or whatever. Um, yeah, I, I, I mean, I don't think there's anything wrong with the like, here's some flowers, but like, I think being recognized for significant contributions like that is meaningful, and I think that the, the people invited would celebrate that. As long as it was in the spirit of like, we're celebrating everybody.
Yeah, okay.
Right? Yeah, yeah.
So it sounds like maybe the only like homework is trying to figure out how are we defining the volunteers so you know how many there are, so we know like for planning purposes, you know?
Yeah, and I, I mean, I have a list every year of like who has been, who's a current volunteer, because we, you know, again, this is something that we report to the Board of Library Commissioners. So I, you know, every year I say, who's, who volunteered this year, and then we get a rough estimate of how many hours they, they did, so that we can report that. Um, so we, we can do that and we can talk about, um, you know, we'll, we'll talk, we'll come up with some more ideas and then at the, you know, probably with the next meeting or the meeting after that, we'll say, this is what we're thinking. What do you think? Is this something that, you know, that the trustees will support and sort of, I mean, I think that's kind of what I'm looking for, is that the trustees will sort of.
Absolutely.
Be the, the ones saluting the volunteers, you know what I mean? Um, because we, you know, we thank them every day when they're here. We're always very effusive in, in, um, in thanking them, but, uh, it just seems like something more formal is, is maybe called for.
Well, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Okay. That's, that's all. Unless anyone has a question about it.
I have a very minor question.
Sure.
Um, you did a patron couch or something like that. Do you keep track of circulation in the same way?
We do, and it's, it's here as well, so the, uh, tally for this, for October was four thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight items circulated, which is up nearly eight percent for the same month, maybe this year. Yeah.
Okay, can you go back to minutes?
I just had one question about the minutes. I'm listed as co-chair. Am I co-chair or vice chair?
I don't know.
What am I? Who am I? What am I doing here?
I thought you were vice chair. I thought you were.
I thought, that's what I thought.
Well, then the good news is, is that I have not officially posted any of our minutes because I'm waiting for, you know, the, everything to be signed.
Yeah.
So I can go back and change it to vice chair everywhere.
Awesome.
Cause it's been there the whole time.
And I just noticed it today. Thank you.
Do we have a motion to approve?
The minutes from October tenth or the twenty-fourth with the vice change?
So my question is, is it the case that the October tenth minutes have that in the title, but they say September tenth at the top of them?
I'm looking at mine. HPL minutes ten, ten, twenty-three, and say October tenth, meeting called to order seven oh one, minute motion to approve minutes from September twelve.
But up at the top of that, in the heading, it says September tenth?
Mine say October tenth, maybe you have an old version.
Whatever Joanne sent me says September tenth.
Maybe I sent a version and then I changed it? I don't know. I sent it around so long ago.
It says September tenth.
Okay. Well, I probably saw that and changed it.
Yeah.
So my version I'm looking at says October tenth.
Okay.
And now says vice chair.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the minutes of October tenth?
So moved.
Are there any additional corrections or changes? All in favor?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And October twenty-fourth?
I move to approve.
As previously amended, are there any further corrections or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Okay. Um, director's goals. Susan and I met with Patrick a couple of weeks ago and took the comments that you all had made, um, and discussed them with Patrick, and we came to a sense that organizing them under these three larger headings seemed to be a more reasonable way to go rather than just to have a list of items. Um, I think we have already seen that in terms of communication and management, that Patrick has implemented some of these things, and I have every reason to expect that, that will continue to be the case. Um, you never got to me about any of the, you didn't provide me with any feedback from the initial draft that I sent you, so I'm going to.
I, yeah, I mean, I think it, it encapsulates what was discussed in that meeting. I don't think it was.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure. Does anybody else have any comments or changes? Joanne?
So I looked at it kind of initially and I think a lot about, uh, the, the last review that I sat and listened to, um, and I have some concerns about the vagueness of the language because if Patrick's going to be evaluated on like launched on communication number three, launched in a timely manner, everyone may have a very different definition of what timely is. Same thing with reasonable cost, regular schedule of meetings. They feel very vague to me and a year from now, a different group could be sitting here and one person may think that something is timely and one person may not, and that may be a five and a two. I remember hearing they were like, you know, like a five and a two. Um, I know when I wrote my goals, I was very specific about them for that reason, because I think it's unfair to, to have then a rating system and not have language that clearly names like what we're looking for. And then the second question I have is, I read the third sentence under management. I, I'm sorry, I don't really understand what that says.
I think that was in reference to what was initially going to be like the community survey and is now going to be strategic planning. I assume that's what upcoming planning sessions refers to.
Yes, that's what we had in mind.
So I'm just, I, I can't speak to that, that one. I, I don't know either, but, um, I, I also, I agree with Joanne, right? So I was the one who wrote about the, um, staff meetings. I mean, maybe other people did too, but I said something like, you know, the director should meet with the staff once a month, every month of the year, right? Like with the entire staff, you know, I kind of made it very specific. Um, so I think that in addition to making it specific, there should be a date for the goal itself, so something like meeting staff meetings. You know, obviously you would do it all year, but it would be, you shall establish the staff meeting by December first. Obviously you've already done it, right? But, you know, that, that goal is already met. But I, I agree with Joanne that without it, how does Patrick know that he's met the goal? Um, so could, if we added, uh, you know, a date that each one of these should be completed and then, I mean, if, if the date of completion for all of these is the, you know, the end of the fiscal year, that's fine, but.
And, and I think like, I think, and maybe Allison doesn't agree, like, it doesn't have to be that we decide how often that Patrick has meetings, but it can say that agreed upon by Patrick and the board so that.
Mm-hmm.
I'm just really concerned, like, when I write my goals at work, like, they have to be quantifiable so that someone can rate them on a scale, and they have to be able to say like, did this or didn't do that. And I feel like, you know, everyone has a different definition. Um, and then I'm happy to, if goal number three has to do with, um, the strategic plan, maybe it could say something like the director will help lead the strateg-, I mean, part of the director's role in the strategic plan is to write the goals, is, so, um, and I can show that when I show that timeline of the strategic plan, maybe that'd be helpful.
I'm wondering about the last two. Um, oop, I just closed it, sorry. Um, the buildings and grounds one, if I recall, it, those actually just seem to be things that are in the job description and are not necessarily, I, I guess I didn't understand why they were, why they were set as goals. Um, oops, that's the wrong thing. Oh, I had it, I had it.
Yeah, I would agree.
Part of that one started, uh, because there were specific things to this year with the new building, like the sidewalk and then the roof issue, uh, and those things that were sort of ongoing concerns, um, for this year.
Beyond routine maintenance.
Right, that was unique to the situation. So this being annual goals, so for this setting of this year, uh, to put in some resolution to that, so that the roof doesn't just become this, oh yeah, we never, that never got resolved, you don't have a front door mechanism.
So much of that's out of Patrick's hands. I feel like we're evaluating him based on what outside contractors are able to do or not do.
Correct, versus like Patrick will secure three estimates for, uh, roof work, right? That's a quantifiable thing that is within his control. I mean, okay, maybe you won't really be able to get three, but, you know, but that's the goal, right? Um, and that's more specific, and if, like, if this is supposed to encapsulate those types of larger things, if we could just name them that we are hoping that he does, if it's the roof, and then make, you know, a series of quantifiable, you know, like interface with a roofer that will be doing the work, you know, once the bid is secured, right? Cause if we don't secure the bid, then Patrick can't be held accountable for it. So comes June thirtieth, Patrick says, I haven't made goal seventy-five, and we'll say, well, we never, the bid never was, went out, because they never wrote the bid. Thus you're not accountable for that, versus he is accountable for going out and getting the three estimates, right? He already started doing that. And if you come back to us and say, hey, I only got two bids, the thing I put, you know, I've sent ten thousand emails over the past three months, I only got two bids, then we note that in the goals. Patrick did this, he only got two. Goal satisfied, right? Like, I feel like they should be a, a little bit.
Flexible.
Flexible, because, I mean, I agree with you a hundred percent that if a goal is not within your own personal ability to attain, I mean, you can't, you know, if your goal was a hundred percent staff retention, like, you can try, but you can't do that. But same with the estimates, but at least you can try to go get them, you know, versus you can't actually put a roof on. You solely cannot, none of us, like the trustees, cannot make sure that, it cannot be our goal, get a new roof for library, because we are not the ones who are in charge of bid documents. Right?
But I think the way that these two, these two goals are written, they, they really do read like n- normal, like this is part of the job description, right? Ensuring the cleanliness of the building. Um, and I re- recognize that that's written in the context of like there's changes to custodial services and so on. Um, uh, but, I mean, I, 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 I wouldn't know how to check that one off and say like, well, you don't have to do that next year.
I guess I'm, I'm a little bit confused, and I was a little bit confused this, this year, um, about how this is all going to play in, whether it's this list, um, whether it's the, whatever the instruments will be that will be handed out to amongst the trustees or to the staff or to me, um, and then how, how this plays into it. I mean, I, um, to, to a large degree, I mean, a lot of what I come to these meetings for is to get the things that I'm then going to turn around and do the next day based on, you know, whatever the collective will of the trustees was. So, um, you know, I always have, I always have these goals, and I'm not saying that I, it's not valuable to have these things, but, um, sometimes it does feel, and, and it did, in a, to a degree, when I first saw the original list of what was put together, it did kind of look like the, you know, the, what was it? I'm not going to get into frog and toad, but, um, it seemed again, like sort of like a task list and, I still feel like the document that we were using wasn't necessarily broken that we used for a number of years. Um, it served us well and it seemed to encapsulate it. I understand it's not necessarily relevant to the staff, and I think that that's something else that maybe should be considered, but, um, but I think it did break down the, you know, the job pretty well into its constituent components and pretty much covered the waterfront. Um, whether things could be added or taken away at this point is another matter, but it was generally relevant, um, and easy to understand, and I felt like we were all on the same page in terms of coming to evaluation time and what we were doing. So, so I'm still a little bit confused about the bigger picture of how we're doing, how we're doing these evaluations and how everything is going to be measured at the end of the day.
Isn't the evaluation though like business as usual? Like how are you doing on budget? How are you doing on staff?
I, I mean, I still think.
Management.
You know, to Jess's point, some of these things do feel like they are business as usual.
Correct, and I would agree with Jess, but I don't think we should not have a way to evaluate business as usual, right? So I think, I thought, maybe I'm confused that the goals were supposed to be, hey, in addition to business as usual.
Sure.
What are a few things that, you know, the same way I have goals, like I have to still, you know, meet with my staff every week and blah, 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 do all these things, but I also have very specific goals that are sort of, okay, you need to do this by this date. So it's both, like I get evaluated on both overall. I thought that's what this was. I, I'm in agreement that those two either need to be removed because they are already being evaluated, or we just need to make them, you know, Susan has the context of what they are, so let's make them specific. Or, or are you suggesting just have the goals and not have the evaluation form?
I, I, not necessarily, no. I'm not saying that. I'm saying that, that, that form, since most of the things that are contained, contained here can slot into the various elements of the job, because there's nothing on here that doesn't really fall into some aspect of my job description. There, there are things that are specific to this year, we're going to do.
Yes, exactly.
X, Y, Z, but they still fall into.
Yes.
How I'm going to be graded by, um, you know, building maintenance issues or whatever. There were specific concerns this year. That would be a place in that review to call them out and say, these were the concerns. these were the concerns for this year, did a good job, did a lousy job, didn't really, wasn't in sync with what, you know, the collective will of the trustees was on these issues or did a, did a good job and, and finish those things off. So I understand it's good to identify these things, but if that's how we're, I just want to be clear on how we're, where the mathematics is going to come from at the end of the day. It's going to be that these things are going to feed into the evaluation.
I think so, right? I mean, weren't we also saying, like, these are the goals that Patrick is also going to be evaluating on for this year? Like, that evaluation form, every year we're saying, how does Patrick do on budget? How does Patrick do in staff management? I don't remember the other categories, right? And then overall, what were those, our evaluation? And then specifically, did Patrick get the bids for the roof? Did Patrick get the website launched or whatever the other ones are? I thought that was the, that was how I submitted my goals.
And I think that's how most people did, because the things that were in the compilation were, seemed to me to be specific for concerns for this year. They weren't very broad-based. I mean, people wrote things, accessibility and after hours, which is something we were talking about for this year. The library of things was specific to this year, a new webpage. And then a broader would be continued updating of the webpage, you know, as appropriate. The participate in community information gathering, visioning, strategic planning, facilitate staff participation, community room and meeting rooms available to the public. That's a little more broad-based. Staff meetings. And then the building and grounds issues, which seems specific to this year because they have been happening within this year, you know, the sidewalk deteriorating and the potential that the roof was leaking, et cetera.
And I think to a certain extent, all of these things fall within the job description and that either circumstances require greater attention or maybe there are things that we feel haven't been getting enough attention and we want to draw attention to them. I'm, I'm happy to take the thing back and incorporate more specificity if that is the will of the board. But this is, this is a supplemental document. It is not a standalone document. It is not in lieu of the job description or anything. It's particular focus in the context of the current year, which is fast approaching half over. And even the website one, if the new system isn't going to launch until March, February, February?
March, actually, I think.
There's going to be all of the things that we are all relying on. I mean, we as collectively, all the Mars libraries. And that the website is part of, it's part of the package that's available, but initially, in terms of launching the system, is probably not going to be the priority. I mean, Patrick can be sure to be ready to work on that as soon as it becomes available, but I think this is going to, there are aspects of that that are out of his control.
But what is within my control is to show progress towards the goals. So not as like creating the content, being ready when it, when it does hit, rather than saying, oh, it's now ready and now I have to start to think about it. So I, you know, can, I'm, will be ready to, at the point of an evaluation, show the tangible, you know, work has been made. And then whatever the extenuating circumstances are, we'll just have to deal with those because they are what they are. But, but sure, I should be able to meet what I consider the goal, which is to do my part in furthering that project along.
And so, you know, I, I'm thinking about the, the way the evaluation went, and I think one of the aspects of this, like, set of goals that I think is important then is that before we do the evaluation, we basically have a meeting where we kind of go through the goals and you can sort of fill in for us, like, here are the ways I've been working towards these goals that you might not have seen because I'm doing it, you know, day to day. And so that, I, because I, I think that, for me, one of the, the most challenging parts about the evaluation process is I, I feel like I don't have the granular information about all of the different things that you do. And if we're going to also have these goals, which, you know, involve, you know, a lot more things that you're doing, we're going to need to have sort of part of the process would be the kind of check-in about the goals before we try to evaluate how well you did on the goals.
Well, and we could also write that in, into the, the evaluation process, that there's a mid-year goal check-in. I mean, so if we, you know, if others agreed with that process, we could certainly add that. I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, some of these are just like, as are written now, they would just be continuing on versus others will have been done. So it could be that if there was a mid-year evaluation, you'd be like, okay, you've already done, the website's up, great, check. And then that is, you know, sure, we have to kind of discuss at the end of the year, but we've already agreed that Patrick met that goal.
Yeah.
So, I don't know.
That's a good idea. Well, Susan, I'd like to distribute something sooner than later that's a little more specific then. And if anyone has other comments that they would like to make, before we do that, please send them. Okay. Moving on to the director's contract. I had a 20-minute conversation this afternoon with the HR director and I now understand more clearly what his concerns are in terms of administrative accountability, because I really didn't get that before. And the na, the crux of the matter is, to use his metaphor, if there were some sort of problem that rose to the level of a hundred-year flood, rather than a complaint that, or a comment or a request for some sort of change that was managed one-on-one between a staff member and the director and resolved. If there were some significant issue that a staff member would theoretically, depending on the nature of the complaint, be able to go to the Mass Commission Against Discrimination directly without even necessarily engaging the director or the board or HR in an effort to resolve the issue. And if the director is altogether responsible to the board, yet the individual is a town employee working under a contract with the town, if it were found that the complaint had merit, where would liability rest? In resolving monetary or whatever the remedy might be? Because the contract is with the town, but the, the staff contract is with the town, but the director's contract is with the board.
So I have a question.
Wait, can I just finish a little bit first? And this has been bothering him to the extent that he did consult town council, which was not able to provide him with what he thought was an adequate means to kind of close that loophole. They didn't have, although he plans to bring it up again, because it's not, because the library is sort of kind of unique, where the head of the senior center and DPW have the town administrator as their supervisor and police chief and the fire chief report to the board.
The superintendent reports to a board and all the people under them, the superintendent report belong to a union. It's, that's why I'm confused. It's a very similar setup, right? Like, a school superintendent always reports to the school committee. So that, is that not, like, am I, like, is that not comparable?
Yeah, but that is the corollary.
That, yeah, that's why I was, like, raising my hand profusely. I was like, to me, it sounds a lot like schools. Like, if someone has a grievance, they file it with their union. You don't, you don't technically, like, and, and union members really, you know, our, our union members will say they don't work for their principal. They work for the union, right? They don't work for the, so I think it's very similar, like, I.
I don't know why he's never used that analogy.
Yeah. I don't know, that's my question, like, how do they resolve it there, in a superintendent's contract?
And then how are other towns, I mean, I, I saw that you had talked with Sharon over at Amherst, who has a similar kind of setup. And so if we just look to that model or any other town that has a similar kind of structure, how are they managing this loophole? Or are they just not managing it and somehow we're the only town that is worried about it?
I have not heard back from the MBLC, although, I mean, I, my question was acknowledged, but I have not gotten any response. The conversation with Amherst director was if an employee has something that cannot be resolved one-on-one between her and her staff, then the next level of appeal is to the Board of Trustees and the next level of appeal is to the town council. I assume that that's written into the staff, to the contract under which the library staff work.
So maybe they may have their own union, right? Like, they may not be part of a.
A broader one, I don't know.
Yeah, maybe that's why, I don't know. I don't want this theorizing.
So it seems like, from what you're saying, Troy seems to have identified a problem that even the town council doesn't see. Do they not acknowledge the problem? I mean, I'm not, I'm a little bit.
They think it's a potential problem. They don't know, they have not offered him a resolution or solution to it. He said that as things stand, that he would be perfectly fine accepting the revised language under accountability.
As a, about the section on accountability? Section three, is that?
Yes.
That was my question, is that the wording that, has that been changed since?
Yes.
Okay.
And at six o'clock tonight, I shared the document as a word, as a Google Drive file with you. And I know it was late, but I was talking with Troy just before five o'clock, so.
And so the language that's in what you shared with us here in this Google Doc is acceptable?
Yes.
To Troy?
Yes.
Okay.
It reads, "The library director is responsible for the management and operation of the Hadley Public Library in accordance with policies established by the board and requirements set forth by the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners. Duty shall be those specific books." I'm sorry, accountability.
Yeah.
"Library Director is accountable directly to the board. He will conduct the administrative business of the library in accordance with directives, policies, procedures and guidelines established by the town and applicable to all town departments. This includes, but is not limited to, conformance with the town's personnel policies handbook, administrative directives and terms set forth in the town's contract with the municipal employees union." I mean, I think that captures the sort of programmatic responsibilities to us and the financial responsibilities. It is my sense that the formation of this union is what has kind of.
Is the hope that we're going to vote on it tonight? Or we're going to let Patrick, like, what is the end?
I printed out copies that are either, that are the same as the one that was distributed last time with the addition of the date when the longevity pay would go into effect and with the date that, of the contract in which the additional five days of vacation were granted, as well as this language in the accountability section. Otherwise, the rest of it is exactly what you have seen before. I have copies if you are prepared to sign. Alternatively, we can wait until the December meeting or we could call a special meeting for the purpose of approving the contract and signing it or making any further changes to it. I, I don't want to push this if you're not ready or not comfortable, that's.
I wonder how Patrick feels.
Oh, I mean, I, as far as I'm concerned, I know what's in the contract. I don't see an issue with it, although it hasn't been, I mean, the back and forth with Troy meant that I didn't really know if this, you know, I don't, I've read the contract, that's all I can say. I've read it, I don't have any specific concern. The fact that Troy is still kind of taking issue with part of it. But if he says that it's okay, then I guess that was the only thing that I was waiting for, was for him to say, you know, yeah, it's fit for signing.
I came prepared if you felt ready to sign it. If you don't, that's absolutely fine. I am not, I do not want anyone to feel uncomfortable or at all hesitant about signing it, and that's fine. And if you're not prepared to, then that's fine. We will vote on it at a future date and then sign it.
Are you prepared to? I am prepared. I mean, unless someone had something specific that they felt was unresolved. But if, if not, if there's nothing specific, then I don't see what we're waiting for personally.
Do you want a motion?
That's what we would need next.
I'll make a motion that we sign Patrick's contract and bring it forward.
Second?
Is there any further discussion?
I just want to say, I'm voting for the contract. I know I voted against some of the items in it, but feel strongly that Patrick needs a contract and it's the will of the board, so just to.
Okay. All in favor? Thank you very much.
Do we have a signature sheet?
Oh, we have two of them, because you have to sign two of them.
Do they have to be in a specific pink color?
John, have you heard anything from the friends after I sent that email? Okay. Did I copy on the email that I sent to Sharon Andrews?
What, what topic?
John being the liaison to the friends and please inform him of.
I don't recall if I saw it or not. I haven't seen anything on that topic since.
She didn't reply to me. It was. At least a week ago. Maybe I will nudge again. I mean, I would have liked to have heard how their. Activity in October was with the book sale and whatever else.
Oh, yeah.
If you know anything about that, I would.
I, they reported on it at the last friends meeting, but I don't remember specifics. They, they considered it a success. And the genealogy event that they held this past Saturday was also a successful event. They had like forty, forty plus people.
Oh, my goodness. Wow.
Okay.
They do, they are meeting next week, third Tuesday, as usual. That's the last meeting of the year. They will not be meeting in December. That's correct.
Am I correct that Sharon is the?
President?
Yeah.
Sharon's still the president, yeah.
Yeah, I will double check her email with you later. And go from there. Joanne has an item not anticipated at the time of posting.
And I also have the strategic plan.
And you could do that too then.
Okay, so I'll give these out rather than want to just pass them down and around. It's the timeline for the strategic plan with more of the details. Patrick has seen this. We've got a copy over. I tried to list what, it, it's, it's still not complete with all dates, but it indicates what. Meeting or activity happens, who does it, and when they do it. And part of the reason it's, it is a two-sided application paper, so let there be back to it. Part of it was, I think, when we complete a strategic plan. Our goals conversation for Patrick will change, right? Like, for the next year, because hopefully they will be in line with the strategic plan. So what I did for this group was outline what comes back to the trustees and what goes to. Out, to, to a larger group. So we're hoping to recruit a larger group that would come to two, possibly. The third meeting is more of an informing meeting, but the first large group meeting is a SWAT exercise, which. People don't like to use SWAT anymore. They call it SOAR. Showing my age, I still call it SWAT. And then we'd have a visioning session. Those, so the SWAT date is set right now as January tenth. And what Patrick and I, and if anyone is interested in joining Patrick and I, I'm happy to have. People join us is we need to brainstorm who our stakeholders are so that we can make personal asks, like. Getting a friend, getting, you know, a parent, getting like, as we think about who the stakeholders are. And then we'll recruit in December and we'll put, we'll also put up ads because we would welcome anyone. But we really want to make sure we target our, our key stakeholders. And then we would have our SWAT in January. Then we'd come back to the trustees. We'd give kind of the results of the SWAT. That's the one under January tenth. We might do that at a trustee meeting, or we could have a separate meeting. We would kind of talk about what our next steps would be. Then we have a large visit, visioning meeting. And that's where I don't know if we go to February or March, depending on how the board wants to work. Then we go back to small and we end with the base where we're kind of bringing everything forward. And it is Patrick. And this is where I thought about the goals. According to the strategic plan, the director develops the goals and objectives for the strategic plan. With the staff. So that's a really good goal for Patrick, right? Like, especially if, if this is important to us. So I just wanted to put this out there so all of you have it and have kind of a clearer picture of what it's going to look like. Does anyone have any questions or want to join the small group of Patrick and I?
I would like to join.
Okay.
Is the. Are you going to solicit feedback from stakeholders only at these in-person meetings? In, in-person meetings, I'm sorry.
That will be determined after we do a SWAT and a needs assessment that we might decide. We need to have a survey or a survey doesn't work. We need to have, you know, a different tool to, to get feedback. Once we decide what we want to focus on, once we do the SWAT and know really what the needs are. And, and it needs assessment, then we can definitely do larger feedback.
The reason I'm asking is because a neighbor of mine is someone who takes, who uses exclusively the home delivery service. He's going to be ninety-two, no, he's going to be ninety-three next month. And he doesn't get out much. And I don't know that he would participate, but I was thinking of someone like that who might. Have an opinion, but not be able to.
Yeah, so the way it works is you have to go through all your stakeholders and kind of get that core committee to come together for that SWAT. So that hopefully we're getting as many perspectives as we can. Then we can look at, as trustees, like, can we do this or not do this? Like, what, and, and what we want to focus on? And then we go out and say, maybe it's a series of small meetings, maybe it's a survey, maybe, you know, who knows?
If there was a lot of homebound people, to take your example, and that was one of the key stakeholders, and then we identified there was twelve homebound people. Maybe they have a Zoom meeting with the, to get those folks' opinions or something.
Well, yes, that was just an example that I was thinking of.
I'm hoping that, I'm going to call someone else, but I'm hoping that when we get to the needs assessment part, that's when we kind of. Really dig into Allison's background, right? Like, helping to figure out how we get the data we want and need. That's what I was kind of hoping that we could use your professional experience in doing that. So really, I just want to get this out. I just want all of you to know. I'm happy to, Jess, I'll include you on my email to Patrick. If anyone else wants to be on it, we'll. We're going to get together informally and just kind of identify stakeholders and talk about that first meeting. I'm happy to lead the SWAT. I've done them many times. I'm really comfortable doing them, so I'm not really that worried. I think that. Hopefully we'll have enough people that will have small groups and, you know, they'll just stress weaknesses and then we'll do. Posters around and then people can go through and be like, yes, this is a strength, no, this is not, and we can really narrow it down. So that's my goal.
Sounds good.
So there's that. And then the other thing I wanted to bring to our attention and Patrick.
Can I just say thank you for laying all this out?
Yeah. Yeah.
Just a pause. To say thank you.
I did talk to Patrick. It came to my attention by reading the paper last week and then. I called Molly about the refugees that have been placed in a hotel in our town. There's seventy refugees with students in our school system. And families, they are Haitian families that are living in a hotel. And I just felt. I called Patrick and I'm like, did you know? And I really feel like, and I want to say this on camera, that I hope that. In the future, when things like this happen, that maybe at a town-wide, you know, director's meeting or town. That's mentioned, because Patrick didn't know, right? And that's a place where we can be really welcoming, right? Like, we have refugees in our town. We're the library, right? Like a welcoming place.
Can I just say that I happen to be aware that someone very soon after they were put up at the hotel. Someone came and checked out virtually all of the children's books that are in Spanish. And there was a conversation going on today with Julia and someone else about. The reading specialist was using some of those materials to be able to assess. What the students' needs would be. So.
So, yeah.
It may not be a high-profile participation.
But it's good that if our town, our library director knew when this was going to happen, it would be good if we had known in advance. So I wrote to Annie McKenzie, who's lovely and helpful and in charge of this whole thing. I CC'd Patrick. I had. Messaged it before I wrote Annie so that there would be no surprises. I said, do you mind if I reach out? And Annie. Wrote back to us and gave us kind of a list of things that we could do, and Patrick answered that. Patrick would probably be happy to talk. About what the library is doing, but I wanted to also ask as trustees if there's anything we want to do. Like, I looked at the Center for New Americans today and I was like, I don't know, could we call them? Could they have classes here? I was just trying to be, could we go over to the hotel and like, say the library's down the corner, like, give them a visit and. Give them cards to come to the library? Like, I just feel like as trustees, our job is to recognize and welcome people to our town. And this is, you know, a population that's new. And Patrick, maybe you could explain, I don't want to speak for you because. You're on that email too, about what the reading that Annie was talking about for the students.
She, she mentioned that some of the students that are, that are here under these circumstances had, and I don't know that I fully understand the, the story, but she. Said that there were some kids that had been really moved, or I think she used something with the phrase, like, something that they had read really changed their lives. I don't really know in what way, but the idea of having some sort of like a community reads or something like that, whether for young people to help. Students that are here, help to understand what, you know, the newcomers in the school are going through or, and to sort of help. Them to understand the challenges that they're facing. So the thought was to either, you know, do something through the, through the young adult. Department here at the library and do some sort of a community read. I just simply said, we're happy to help. I mean, we help people of all. Types of backgrounds and in all types of circumstances. And if there's something specifically that we can do to help provide space, facilitate, you know. The use of meeting rooms for whatever kinds of meetings that people may need to hold with whoever, lawyers, anyone. School administrators, whatever, that, that the library is always willing to make that available. So. The people in that community should know that this resource is here for them as well as anyone else.
So my understanding is that there's like a, there's a coordinator or like a caseworker or something who the town or who the state has brought in. This is just from what I read in the Gazette, that there's someone who, like, there's, there's someone or an organization that is, that is kind of overseeing, coordinating things. And I'm wondering if we can be in communication with that person to see what their needs are.
So Annie is the coordinator from our side of the town.
Yeah.
And she's working directly with that coordinator.
Great.
So she's looking to gather a list, right now, she's just looking for a list of like. Names of people or organizations, like a representative from an organization that would be interested in like helping. So all she's really looking for, if we're interested in something like this, all she's looking is, who is the point person on the trustees? How do I contact them? That's, that's what she's looking, the stuff with Patrick, kind of, we, you know, we kind of got that rolling, but really. She's looking at every organization in town and like, who is going to be the, so I just, I'm bringing that to the trustees to ask. If we are interested in doing that and do we want a contact for Annie? I just feel like a library should be a really safe and including place. And I feel like as a trustee, that's a good way to have, reach out. But if we don't, we still, we're still helping, no matter whether we decide as a group or not.
I would say yes, and if you need someone to be that contact person, I could be that person. But I'm not going to step in front of someone else who is more.
I'll send you the email, Jess, so you can read it too.
Thank you.
Yeah, from Annie. She was great.
I'm glad to hear that. Can I ask a question? Because I thought when you said, reported in the Gazette. That I was reading about the Climate Change Committee. And how this has resulted in a new code of conduct for committees serving the town.
I read that too, yeah.
And I'm wondering if we've heard anything from the town about needing to adhere to a, a new code of conduct. So I'm just registering that as a question. It was literally in today's paper that the Climate Change Committee all had to like sign off on this code of conduct. Because, well, I'm not going to, I'm not going to summarize that situation because I'm, I won't do it neutrally. But. Yeah, just wondering if that, if that's something for all town boards.
I, I can't remember how I knew about it. There is some new, some overarching, not any single municipality. Focused organization. Has a recommendation for code of contact or code of conduct. And I know at one point, I'll go find the email, I forwarded the link to the town administrator to ask. Have you all ever thought about this? Have you seen this? Are you aware of it? I did not hear anything back. This summer, there was. An email to which a document called the. Handbook for Committees, Boards, and Commissions. Was sent under. The chair's name. And.
The chair of what?
Chair of the Select meetings. I did not look at it right away, and when I looked at it. There were some things about the document that I really thought were unclear or. Made it incredibly difficult to read. And I. Sent suggestions to the chair of the select board and did not hear back. There was a side conversation. With Molly about it. And I have not forwarded it to you because it's posted on the town's website. It is extremely difficult to read and understand. I will be happy to, but that's not necessarily, it talks about how to conduct public hearings, how to conduct. Meetings, what is expected. I think it is not.
I think that's kind of what they were referring to in this, in this article today. I just, yeah, it's hot off the press, so I didn't know. It might affect us.
Well, I will go and find the municipal thing that I found, and I will also send you all a link to the document that is posted on the town website. Do we have any other business? Any other comments? Any other?
I have one item of business. I regret to inform you that I am submitting my resignation. Term is up in March. I am unable to make the meetings in December, January, or February due to various commitments that I cannot get out of. I was planning on moving on anyway and looking for other ways to engage with the library at the end of my term. So I thought with this, this gives you an opportunity to try to bring someone in a little bit earlier that can engage. In this process, because this is the future. You want a future trustee to help with this. I'm, I'm happy to help with any surveys or whatever. But I'm just like, I'm literally crushed with work and I've.
and I've got two kids going to college next year, one expected, no problem. When you add the second that was unexpected, it's just an extra work. I've got someone that's resigned at work. Got another one going out with twins. So it's just, I'm just underwater and I know I won't be able to make the other meeting. So I figured this is an opportunity. It's been a pleasure, but it's time. The tribe has spoken.
I am sorry, but I understand.
Yeah. So I'll make sure to like wrap up all the minutes because none of them are posted. But now that we've signed the contract, technically now we can release all of the minutes that have executive session. So they're all going to go public. Not that it's that exciting, but, you know.
May you get through all of that stuff?
I'm sure I will. It's like, it is, you know, hey.
Well, most likely they're not.
Yeah, worse things have happened.
They have?
Yeah.
Well, on that note, do I have a motion to adjourn? Second, all in favor?